Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Palaquin.
Excused.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Eight here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, April 13, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, Counselor?
He seconded, but he wasn't here.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you. I was not here.
He can still, at the moment, he can still second it, he just won't vote on it.
I will not vote for it.
I'll second it, then. Any corrections or clarifications on the many minutes? Seeing unsimple hand, vote is fine, all those in favor?
I abstain.
You're abstaining as well?
Thank you.
That's why you were here either. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. A, general government, Counselor Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General government meeting was held on Wednesday, April 15, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members Counselor Vandal, Counselor Palaquin, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Carrasco Jr., and citizens members Holly Cristo and Michael James. Also in attendance were Counselor Steves, Counselor Estrada, Kevin Pecos, Karen Harnoy, Mindy Ernest Funnier, Matty Bonnades, Julie Pina, Michael Montigny, Will Canoia, Roger Cowett, and Estelle Cowett. We called the meeting to order at 7:20. It was following the DPW budget meeting, and this was the general government budget meeting. So there's a lot of notes here, and I'm going to, I'll try to condense a little bit, and let's give you the highlights as we go through. The one thing I would like to point out, there's a number of notes here that say no discussion was held, or no discussion took place. Where it says that, I just want people to realize, it was because there was no question, perhaps. It wasn't that we didn't give a chance for discussion, so, just a little odd, I've never seen it written like that, so, it caught me a bit by surprise, because we did have a lot of discussion on many of these budget items. All right, moving on. Agenda item number one was to review and vote to approve the '16 Town Council budget. Mr. Pecos explained to us that there'll no longer be a recording clerk for subcommittee meetings, that this is to save money in the budget for meetings that the chair considers a recording clerk would be necessary. Counselor Carrasco asked if a recorder could be purchased for each of the subcommittees. Ms. Rivera said she presently downloads all recorded meetings to the server, and would do so, do the same for subcommittee meetings if we so desired, so I believe we will be doing that, moving forward. That the budget was unanimous, and there is, excuse me, the overall budget was $12,300, seems wrong, which is a 26.21 percent decrease, and it was unanimously voted in, recommend to council. Agenda item number two was review and vote the town manager's budget. Mr. Pecos said there's an increase, that's an error, too, it's FY 216, and it has FY 215. Let me make a note of that, please. Ms. Pecos said there's an increase for the part-time secretary, for the, yeah, part-time secretary of 10 hours per week. Mr. James said he believed all departments were supposed to reduce their budgets by 2 percent, but this budget was an increase of 6.11 percent. Mr. Pecos said he's not a proponent, proponent of across-the-board cuts, and as long as the bottom figure served the overall budget cuts. He was satisfied. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Carrasco. It was a favorable recommendation to council to approve the manager's budget for $276,794. That was a 6.11 percent increase, and that was a favorable recommendation by all. Agenda item number three was to vote the 2016 accountant budget. Counselor Carrasco said that they, in the budget, there was a listing for an upgrade for the assistant town accountant, and Mr. Carrasco said that we had already turned that upgrade. Mr. Pecos said that since it was a new budget, he was bringing it back, as the town accountant had requested the additional help. Mrs. Harnoy said this person is attending classes to get certification. Certification will take three years. Counselor Moriarty said the increase should happen after certification had been completed. There was a lot of discussion on that, and then we decided to postpone voting on this item until a future meeting, which actually took place just prior to this meeting. So we voted to postpone, and that was a favorable, favorable seven-to-zero vote to postpone. Agenda item number four was vote to review the 2016 assessors budget. Mr. Pecos said that this is a maintenance budget. Questions were asked about the assessor stipends, which is something that's been in place for years and years, and we talked about changing that up in the future, but it wouldn't happen at this budget. And then there was a motion by Counselor Moriarty, seconded by Counselor Carrasco, and it was a favorable recommendation to council for the assessors' budget of $191,146. That's a 2.47 increase. It was a five-two vote, with Counselor Carrasco and Mike James being opposed. Agenda item number five was to vote the 2016 treasurer-collector budget. Mrs. Ernest Funnier said the upgrade to Mrs. Lamb is due to the increase responsible Mrs. Lamb has. She's certified as an assistant collector, and just needs the title to have her certificate issued. The overall budget was $316,033, which was a 4.27 decrease, and all was in favor to recommend to council to accept that budget. Agenda item six was the 2016 town attorney budget. Counselor Palaquin asked about the necessity of the MGL books. Mr. Pecos said he left this in the budget, as if, and if the next manager does not need it, he can cancel the subscription. The overall budget was $110,000, which is a 12.35 percent decrease, and that was a favorable recommendation, seven-to-zero to the council. Vote to approve the 2016 town clerks budget. Mr. Pecos said that 10 hours were going to be taken out of this budget and transferred to the inspections department budget, but now the building inspector, position, as of now, the building inspector's position is being turned into a part-time position, and the clerical position in the building department will not be eliminated, as a full-time clerical is needed for that department to cover the hours that the inspector would have done, a number of those clerical duties. So we'll decrease the numbers on the inspection, which is a higher pay, as you are all aware, and we will be able to make up the, the actual service by having the extra hours for the clerk at a lower rate, so that will save money. The overall budget was $167,931. That was a 2.26 decrease, and that was voted as six-to-one, favorable recommendation to council. Mike James was opposed.
That was increase, you said decrease?
Oh, sorry. It was a 2.26 percent increase. I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out. Too many percentages. Agenda item number eight, the 2016 elections budget. There are less elections this coming fiscal year. That was in answer to why that budget seemed lower this year. So, the overall budget, $52,347. It's a 16.97 percent decrease. It was a favorable recommendation to council, seven-zero. Agenda item 19 was the 2016 cable budget. This budget amount is offset by revenues from the charter subscribers. There is no cost to the taxpayers. The overall budget was $126,419, and that is a 1.42 percent increase. A vote by show of hands, it was favorable to council, seven-zero. The 2016, agenda item 10, 2016 administration budget. The budget is substantially reduced due to the decrease in fuel cost. The overall budget was $619,500. It's a 20.98 percent decrease, and that was unanimously voted to recommend to council, seven-zero. Agenda item 11 was the 2016, again, there's a typo there, it should be '16, data processing budget. The budget is level funded. The overall budget was $193,500. It was unanimously recommended to send to council, seven-zero. Agenda item 12, the FY 16, FY 16 council reserve budget. This budget was also level funded, level funded. The overall budget, $100,000. Unanimously voted to recommend to council, a four-zero. Somewhere, we lost a voter, apparently. Not sure who didn't vote on that one, or maybe it should be seven-zero, I can't tell you, because I don't have that in front of me. I'm just reading from here. Agenda item 13 was the 2016 personnel budget. Again, no discussion was held, basically, there were no questions asked on that one. And the overall budget was $3,106,621,000, which is a 4.7 percent increase, and that was recommended unanimously by the, by the members to council, a seven-zero vote, in favor. The agenda item 14, 2016 group health and life insurance budget. The budget includes the 60-40 split that was recently voted in. And the overall budget is $1,725,200. That represents a 7.14 percent, a 7.14 percent increase. It was voted to recommend unanimously, seven-to-zero to council. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty, whoops. Oh, we did add the school, there was another item, another, it wasn't officially on, but it was part of the budget for the group health and life, and that was the 2016 school group health and life insurance budget. That budget was $1,524,800, which is a 15.56 percent increase. That was voted to recommend unanimously, seven-to-zero. Agenda item 15, the 2016 general insurance budget. That overall budget was $528,631, a 27.7 percent decrease. Again, unanimously voted to recommend to council, seven-zero. The 2016 boards and committees budget. That budget was $7,188, which is a 1.5 percent increase. That was recommended unanimously, to recommend to council, seven-zero. Agenda item 17 was the 2016 articles budget. The overall budget was $101,000, which is a .79 percent decrease. That was recommended, voted to recommend to council favorably, seven-zero. Moving on, almost done. Agenda item 18 was the 2016 debt service budget, and that overall budget was $2,796,207. It was a level-funded budget, and again, it was voted unanimously to recommend to council, a seven-zero vote. Agenda item 19 was the FY 2016 Schedule I and Schedule V changes. In Schedule I, there shows a 2 percent increase for non-union employees, adding deputy DPW position to ASICS category, and adding assistant town accountant and assistant collector to MS-12 category. In Schedule V, a 2 percent increase, and under police department, the addition of mechanic clothing allowance and custodian part-time position. On this one, there was no budget numbers, it's just a change in Schedule I and the Schedule V. We had a vote, it was recommended, that was seven-zero, unanimous recommendation to council to change the Schedule I and Schedule V as noted. And at that point, we had adjournment at 9:40. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we did just have a meeting in the George Parent Room at 6 o'clock for a couple of items. One was to consider the Charlton IMA, which is the water contract with Charlton that's been worked on for numerous years, and I just wanted to, because it is on the agenda this evening, I just wanted to say that it was a unanimous recommendation from the committee members and others that were there, to recommend to council to accept the IMA with Charlton. And at this point, no other meeting scheduled. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
Thank, thank you. A meeting of the DPW's subcommittee was held on Wednesday, April 15, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Clemens, Counselor Estrada, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Carrasco Jr., citizen members Mark Moran and Roger Cowett. Also in attendance were Counselor Steves, Kevin Pecos, Head of Blakely, Karen Harnoy's, Madeline Dowes, Julie Pina, Tara Tebow, Michael Tebow, Richard Tebow, Kristen Doyle, and Estelle Cowett. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Agenda item number one, review and vote to approve FY 2016 Department of Public Works budget. Mr. Pecos said this is a department that cannot afford a reduction in staff, but a reduction has been made in attrition. Counselor Carrasco asked about the PE certification for Ms. Blakely. Mr. Pecos said she is working to get the certification transferred from New York to Massachusetts, but it will take about two years. She can do the work and have a PE sign-off on it. Questions were raised regarding reduction in pay for an employee. Mr. Pecos said he was not, he would not engage in this decision in front of the council, and would speak to the employee and their supervisor. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Mr. Cowett, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 Department of Public Works overall budget of $1,655,044, which is a 1.77 increase. Vote by show of hands, four to three, SMEC and ME opposed. Agenda item number two, review and vote to approve FY 2016 snow and ice budget. Mr. Pecos said the total is identical to last year's budget. The total has just been put into one budget rather than two different budgets. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Mr. Moran with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 snow and ice overall budget of $400,000, which is a 99.80 percent increase. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, seven-to-zero. Agenda item number three, review and vote to approve FY 2016 sewer enterprise fund. Mr. Pecos said this budget is status quo. A motion was made by Counselor Clemens and seconded by Counselor Estrada, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 sewer enterprise fund overall budget of $3,629,872, which is a 1.88 percent increase. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, seven-to-zero. Agenda item four, review and vote to approve the FY 2016 water enterprise fund. Mr. Pecos said this budget is status quo. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Clemens with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 water enterprise fund overall budget of $3,824,368. It's a 3.22 percent increase. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, seven-to-zero. A motion to made, was made by, a motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Clemens. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, seven-to-zero. Respectfully submitted, Counselor Vandal adjointed meeting at 7:12. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. That's all I have.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Palaquin is not here, however, there is a Education and Human Services Subcommittee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 29, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room, which is down on the first floor of Town Hall. And just to read off the agenda quickly, it's all budget-related, they'll be voting on reviewing and recommending to approve the fiscal budgets for the library, the health department, the veterans, community center, and recreation budgets, as well as the school department budget. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no meeting minutes to read, but I do have a meeting planned tomorrow night at the George Parent Room, 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a meeting held on April 22, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Manna, Counselor Vecchia, Counselor Vandal, Counselor Steves, Counselor Clemens, Counselor Estrada, citizen members Jack Jovan and Gary Forzier. Also in attendance was town manager Pecos, fire chief DeFranzo, police chief Sherrett, Nick Tortis, Ryan Chase, Louis Torres, Myatt Binema, Shane Woodson, Scott Bailey, Robert Salisbury, and Chris Ayoso. I called the meeting to order at 6:05. Agenda item number one was to review and vote and approve the FY 2016 inspections budget. Mr. Pecos discussed the changes in the inspection budget. The building commissioner's hours will be, has been reduced to 15 hours with a full-time clerical, with, with a full-time clerical to support the department. Construction will be done to accommodate the health department inspection department, economic development department, together in all-in-one place. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Manna, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve FY 2016 inspection budget of $110,029, which is a decrease of 28.27 percent decrease. Vote by the show of hands, all those in favor, six-zero. Agenda item number two was reviewed to vote and approve the FY 2016 fire department budget. Mr. Pecos said that this, this budget is basically level-funded. There are two vacant positions which are not being filled. Fire training session has been added to the budget. This budget includes a 2.5 wage increase for the last year of the union contract. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Manna with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 fire department budget at $2,307,009, which is a .71 increase. Vote by the show of hands, all in favor, five-zero. Counselor Manna was absent for this time, for this vote. Counselor Manna left at 7:15 due to an engagement that, that she had following. A motion to add the public safety budget was made by Counselor, excuse me, by Mr. Jovan and seconded by Mr. Forzier. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five-zero. Agenda item number three, review and vote to approve the FY 2016 police, public safety budget, excuse me. Mr. Pecos said this is, there is a big credit due to the solar energy credit. A motion was made by Mr. Jovan and seconded by Mr. Forzier, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the FY 2016 public safety budget at $173,724, which is a 1.29 decrease. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five-zero. Agenda item number four, formerly number three, review and vote to approve the FY 2016 police department budget. Mr. Pecos pointed out the major changes in this budget. There is a vacant position not being filled. The budget includes a 2.5 increase on the second year of the union contract. The Quinn bill is built into this budget. Mr. Pecos discussed the reasoning for the Quinn bill funding. Questions were asked on individual line items. Chief Sherrett addressed these questions. There are 34 full-time police officers and three full-time dispatchers. A motion to amend the patrol car budget to $35,000 was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Vecchia. Vote by show of hands, three to two. Jack Jovan and Gary Forzier opposed. Counselor Vecchia asked for a list of cars, their ages, mileage, executa, executa, excuse me. Mr. Pecos and Chief Sherrett said they would get that vehicle fleet information to all council members by the next council meeting. Deputy chief Woodson said the two new vehicles requested would be going to the fleet and not to the chief, deputy, or the lieutenant. The cars being replaced have over 100,000 miles, which in police miles is, is over 300,000 miles. A motion was, a motion was made to amend the overall police budget FY 2016 by, excuse me, budget two, $3,405,207 was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Moriarty. Vote by show of hands, three to two. Jack Jovan and Gary Forzier opposed. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Vecchia, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the police FY 2016 budget of $3,405,207. Vote by show of hands, three to two. Myself and Jack Jovan opposed. A motion was made to adjourn by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Mr. Jovan. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five-zero. This meeting was adjourned at 9:30 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera. We have no other meeting scheduled at this time.
Yeah. Actually, and I did item number one, as I recall, that, that was part of the discussion, the construction will be done according to, to accommodate the health department, blah, blah, blah. But what I think, I think the end of, the end of, the end of that discussion was that Mr. Pecos said that that wouldn't need to be done because of the changes he had created in the, in the budget, but it might later have to happen if the school department returns to Town Hall. That they, we weren't going to be making those changes, the physical changes to the building, at this time. As I recall the discussion being.
An amendment to the minutes really isn't up to me to verify. It's really a decision of the subcommittee to decide if you want to amend the minutes or not. That's, that's a procedural motion that needs to be made at the subcommittee meeting. I don't think it can be done here.
Which is, but the construction, to accommodate the changing, we are not going to construct at this present time. That's what Counselor Steve is.
That's what I understood the discussion to be saying. Is that true?
Yes, if you're just looking for confirmation, sure.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Manna? We are allowed to make corrections up here. Yes, yes, we are. And they, I believe our recording clerk, she makes a note of that, and she may give it back to the recording clerk, to the subcommittee, to make those changes. That's been our past practice. Thank you.
So if we make, I just gotta make sure I clarify here, because I thought if we make the inspection departments collaboration, if you collaborate the, the various departments, as you said, and add that 10 hours, aren't we, don't, aren't you recommending that we do some sort of construction to make that better for the, for the community?
For the public.
For the public, sorry. On the construction of the inspector, you know, the, the building inspector and the health inspector and all that.
Yep.
Is the construction necessary as we go forward, regardless of whether the school department comes back?
Well, if we accommodate the school department in this building.
Right.
If that ends up being a viable option, then we would have to do that construction.
Definitely.
Because we would need to displace the ED department upstairs.
Right.
Because the school department would certainly need at least all of the basement.
Okay.
If we don't do that, then we won't need to do that construction.
Okay, good. All right. No, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions before I turn it over to the chair? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. F, Town manager search committee, right back to Counselor Carrasco.
All right, great. Just an update to our committee, we do have, we did have a meeting held, I believe, last Thursday?
Yeah.
Last Thursday, we held it in an executive session, because we were reviewing the resumes and the candidates that put forward. I'm, I can gladly say we have a deeper pool of candidates with a large amount of experience, and the committee has selected individuals to be interviewed as semi-finalists at the beginning of May. So that will begin, that process will begin, and hopefully we'll have continued success and continued momentum moving forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. And with any luck, just as an addendum, June 1, which is a council meeting, is now scheduled to be a council meeting, we would have the finalists at least announced.
Yes.
And then potentially a council of the whole later on, in order to actually vote on whom is hired. But hopefully by June 1, we should be able to at least introduce whoever the finalists are, and that we can start getting, the committee, or rather, the town council and the public can start getting to know that, those individuals. Any other questions, comments? Moving on to agenda item number five, chairman's announcements, just a quick couple ones. One, water is back on at Main Street that we shut off earlier today due to some infrastructure problems, and the road, I've been told, should be open around 9:00 PM. At the same time, the end of Moore Street, which also had some issues this morning and throughout the day, should be open at any time now. It may or may not already be open at this point, but if it isn't, it shouldn't be long. And then lastly, this weekend, Saturday, May 2, we're at the new middle high school on Tory Road. We are trying to do another positive sort of thing for the community, for food share, as well as the recently reformed middle high school booster club, and that'll have a double header of slow pitch co-ed softball. The first game at 6:00 PM between alumni of the pioneer baseball and softball teams of years past, and then at 7 o'clock, the plan is town versus school. We have certified umpire behind the plate, John LaFlesh from Bay Path, excuse me, will be the base umpire, celebrity umpire, if you will. And, and I know that Counselor Manna, Counselor Estrada, Counselor Carrasco, myself, Counselor Steves, Counselor Vecchia, and Mr. Pecos will all be playing, that's one word for it, but will be on the field come Saturday night, and encourage anybody and everybody to come on out. If you do come, please try to bring some non-perishable food items for food share, and, you know, if you could throw a couple dollars towards the booster club, that would be great as well. And with that, I will turn it over to the town manager for agenda number six, town manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Five items, four of these are personnel-related. I know there's been sort of discussion and talking formally about some of the staff taking retirements and whatnot, but I just wanted to be sure that the council was aware of each one of these, the public is aware, and also what plans I'm making for replacement, to be sure that we're all tracking them in the same way. First, the ED director, Sandy Ackley, will be retiring. She actually wanted to retire this month. I've asked her to stay around for a little bit longer while we begin the recruitment process. That will start this week or next week, and probably will be a one- or two-month recruitment process. Building commissioner Nick Tortis, as you all know, retired actually the week before last. Nick is working on an interim basis for the town part-time. Nick is working on an interim basis for the town part-time, and in the budget is a proposal to reduce the position to part-time for the foreseeable future, and if that's approved by the council, and Nick will be staying in the position until such time as we determine to go back to half-time, full-time, whatever. That'll be a future decision that your new town manager will make. Police Chief Dan Charette will be retiring in July. The exact date is not set yet, but it looks like it'll be middle of July. I will appoint an acting chief, but the, I'm basically saying to the council that I think the new town manager should pick the chief that he or she wants, and so I'm not going to begin that recruitment process. I'll appoint an acting, or provisional, as referred to, and let the new town manager, when they get here, begin that recruitment for the permanent chief. And finally, the DPW director, we did advertise once, we did not secure a satisfactory candidate, so I'm going to re-advertise it in the next couple of weeks. Now, on the ED director and a DPW director, what I'm trying to do is time these so that we get the advertisement outs, we get the preliminary interviews underway, and just about the time the new manager comes in, we can hand over to him or her, the finalists, and again, let the new manager make their choices. I think it's very important to allow the new manager to pick their management team, and these are four key people that the manager will make the final choice on, and so I'm not anticipating making those appointments myself, but getting the process going so the new manager can walk into a process that's nearly completed, pick from some finalists, and get his or her staff up to speed very quickly and at full strength. So I just wanted the council to aware that, make sure if there's any concerns, please let me know, now, over the phone, whatever, because that's, that's the plan I'm pursuing, and hopefully everybody's good with that. Any other item? The Board of Health is proposing a fee increase. Apparently, apparently their fees have not been looked at or increased for over ten years, and so they are proposing a fee increase, but in order to enfranchise the public, they are having a public hearing on May seventh, two thousand and fifteen, right here in the town council chambers, for anybody who would like to come in and provide any testimony on that fee increase. And that is all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to number seven, swearing in and presentations, we have two, the first of which is a presentation to the council on behalf of the family of the late Edgar McCann, a former, very long-time counselor here, and that'll be done by Paulette De Sorcey.
My name's Paulette De Sorcey, I live at thirty-nine Worcester Street. I was going through my father's things this week, and I found the picture of the found, the first picture of the first Southbridge Council. That was in March of nineteen seventy-four until February nineteen seventy-five. And on behalf of my father and of all the counselors that were on the board at that time, I'd like to present the picture to the acting town manager and also to the chairman of the council.
And as this works out, this actually dovetails in quite nicely, in that next year, we are obviously celebrating the town's bicentennial, its two-hundredth birthday, and, and this is obviously a big part of that history of the town, is, is the, the way the government has been run over those two hundred years, all the way from the Pol parish till now. And with that, as a nice little segue from the, the bicentennial co-chair, but here tonight wearing his hat from the local historic district committee, is Mr. Steve Brady.
Thanks to the town council for having me here, for inviting me here to talk about the local historic district study committee. Now, I was invited to talk, and it's actually the study committee, it's not the historic district, local historic districts committee, it's a study committee, and it has been inactive for some time. It's been active for almost nine years. The goal of a local historic district study committee is to study the appropriateness of founding a local historic district within the town, within the town of Southbridge. We were given, the, at the time, the Southbridge Historical Commission thought it would be a good idea to expand on the national historic district that is currently in the center village, which is the downtown area from about Coombe Street up to about Hamilton Street, and it's both sides of the street, roughly. So a local historic study committee was founded in two thousand and two, and the first thing that a local historic district study committee does is they have to find out what they have to do, the rules to follow in order to create a bylaw that would be used by the town. And it's, the state has a, has a, a great publication that is used as a guideline, and the goal is to follow Mass General Law Forty-C, which is all about mass historic districts. It's the Historic Districts Act. So, one of the things we had to do, there's a, a flow of, there's a flow chart of activities, and so it's, the local historic district study committee's founded, and then the next thing, the local historic district study committee conducts a property owner survey of the affected area. So you map out the area, so it was the central district, which is on Main Street, and what we had decided to do at the time is to expand it on both sides down to the rotary on the east side and up to where the intersection of South Street and Main Street is on the west side, so that would be roughly where the Vienna is. And the reason we really wanted to do that is because just, there are sixty-three properties in there, and all of those, just about all those properties were built in the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. So they all fall into the guidelines for a local historic district. But we thought it was important to protect the center national historic district, because as you enter the town, you enter it coming from the east, you, you go up from the rotary and you, you go up the hill, you're not in the district yet, the central district, you don't reach that until you come to where the art center is. And on the other side, when you come in from the west, going east, you come in off of Main Street or South Street, you're not in the district till you come to Hamilton Street. So we thought it was important to try to protect the whole stretch of Main Street. So, we inventoried all of the properties, the sixty-three properties, and cataloged them and indexed them, put a summary report together for the state. We submitted the report to the state, and that was in two thousand, October of two thousand and five. There was a slight adjustment that had to be made to a map, and then from there, we were supposed to have a public hearing. But one of the things that I was very concerned about was the response from the property owners. That response, we, we sent out, we did a mail-in, we received, forty-four percent responded. And of the forty-four who, percent that responded, seventy-three percent were in favor, eighteen percent were opposed, and nine percent were unsure. So of course, you know, we then had a, a public meeting right here in the council chambers that was in March of two thousand and four, to go over everything. It was not well-attended, which was unfortunate. Now, at this point, it might be good to talk about the difference between a local historic district and a national historic district. A national historic district is a paper designation of an area that is deemed historic and worth preservin', and it's, it's given by the Parks Department of the United States. It does not offer any protections to the properties whatsoever, except for when federal, municipal, or state money is used, the town's local historic commission has a say in what can happen to the properties. An example, an example of, of that happening was at the American Optical rebuild. When they rebuilt the American Optical complex, they wanted to tear down the front facade of the old AO complex, but because federal funds were being used and it was on a national historic district, the local historic commission got to say yea or nay to that, and that was one of the things that was said, you can't tear down the front facade of the building. You can do what you want behind it, but you must maintain the clock tower and the front facade. So that kind of shows you what you can do. An example of, of a property that's on a national, a national district or a national register that does not entail federal money is the example of the house that was just demolished on Main Street. There's a pre-eighteen sixty colonial that was next to Friendly's that was just torn down. It's all part of the Cumberland Farms project. So that, that's just an example. If you're not using federal, state, or municipal money and it's private property, the owner of the property can do whatever they want to it. But in a local historic district, it offers protections to those properties. It, it's actually kind of like a planning board. You, you have a bylaw on what can be done to the property as long as it protects the architectural integrity and character of that property. So that's basically the difference. So you can't just come in and buy the property, knock it down, and do what you want. It has to go through, much like a planning board, it has to go to the local historic district committee, which we don't have here. We only have the study committee. So that was my concern with the response from the, from the property owners. We only had a forty-four percent response, and of that, seventy-three percent were in favor and eighteen were, eighteen percent were opposed. And once again, the report went off to the state, it goes to the mass historic district, the mass historical commission for review. It did come back from then, from them, but the next step was a public hearing. At that point is where we pulled back, because we didn't feel that there was real support, a strong enough support to go forward. So that's where we are right now. It might be time to revisit it, given the things that are going on in the downtown today. Any questions?
Counselor?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you too, Mr. Brady. You're revisiting, reorganizing a, or organizing a historical commission? I, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was asked to come and, because this is part of, the town is reviewing all boards and commissions. So I was asked to come and talk about the local historic district study committee, because I was on that, I chaired that ten years ago, and I'm the last one, so.
Okay.
But we, you know, it is a good thing to actually consider doing.
If there is interest, then we would reform that committee.
Right, then we would bring it forward.
Right. Have you, have you reached out to anybody, or just this year first?
Well, what we would have to do is rebuild the committee itself. There are requirements for the committee. There are seven committee members, of which it's required that there should be an architect or a certified architect on the committee, a realtor on the committee, property owners within the proposed district, people from the historical society or historic commission should also be on that committee. It would be, we would have to rebuild the committee to just start it, so.
And those who are interested would contact the manager's office.
Right.
That's, um, thank you. I, I feel it's very important that we maintain the history in our, our town as the best we can.
I agree. I totally agree. All right, any other questions?
Seeing them. Thank you three times, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda number, agenda item number eight, which is citizens' forum, so if we have any resident of town who would like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to do so.
Good evening, council. My name is Steve Demers. I live at twenty-five Hotwell Terrace in Southbridge, and I come before the committee tonight on a police issue. First of all, what I'd like to do is I made some, some copies of the United States Supreme Court towards the police. It says, "The police have no affirmative duty to protect us." This law was put in place in nineteen seventy-two and was reaffirmed last year by Justice Roberts, sometime it's late December. So I have a copy for each one of you that I'd like to pass around, because most of my speaking tonight will have to be, will have been done towards the police department and the security of the town of Southbridge. I'd like to start off by saying I've lived at twenty-five Hotwell Terrace for roughly fifteen years now. I've had four break-ins in the last two years, and three since January seventeenth of this year. They were able to catch the first person, whom I believe is the same as the second person and the third person. I have video surveillance on my, my home and all my property. I supplied the police department with the video surveillance. They therefore caught this person and are in the presence of prosecuting them. I, in February, and I don't know, can't tell you the exact date, which I probably should have been more prepared to, to bring it forward to you, I contacted the DA, District, the Assistant District Attorney from Dudley District Court, had called my house, looking for information on what was going on. She was unaware of any video surveillance or anything, so I had explained to her that I had given the video surveillance to the police department. And she asked me very politely if I had time to go to the police department and see if I could retrieve that video and bring it up to her, and I, I told her I would absolutely do that. I went to the police department and nobody knew who was handling, handling. Meanwhile, to give them this video, I want to step back just one minute, to give them this video, I had to go out, because the video was so large, I had to go out and buy a thirty-nine dollar thumb drive to put this video on. So I go to the police station and I'm looking for the video to bring up to the court. Of course, the video is mine, so it should be released to me. I waited three days, nobody could find the video. Nobody finds the video today. So I recopied the videos and got that to the district attorney who's handling the cases. So a second time in February, we were violated again by a person coming into our yard, digging through our cars, and walking around the yard. I then again, actually, I did not. My tenant Savannah Nicole called and reported because she had left her purse in her car that night and had gotten her tax returns in that morning. She had worked a fourteen-hour shift as a, as a waitress, and when she got home, she was tired. She got to lock her doors and she left her purse on the passenger seat. Eight hundred dollars was in that purse. So we went through the video and we found the video, and again, the police came to the house, they watched the video over my computer, and I made them a copy. The second copy, the DA has not seen. It has not been presented to her. She has called the police department and they continue to say there is, there is no second video. So again, just on the seventeenth of, a week ago last Friday. So again, just on the 17th of, a week ago last Friday, an intruder came into the yard again. And we got it on videotape. I happen to have some friends in the Charlton Police Department, and I also have a very good friend who is a state trooper from Charlton where I do my business. I have my business there. And he was very, very happy to look at the tapes and see what he could come out with it. And it was very simple for him, okay, because of the way the kid worked. In video number one, he would always, he had gloves on both hands, open the doors, but he would always take that left-handed glove off to fish around inside the cars, okay? Long story short, he believes that it's the same person that has done this. Now, I'm not talking just my house. I know 300 people who have filed complaints with the Police Department and nothing has been done since the first of the year. I know another 200 people, at least, maybe more, that have not filed complaints.
Mr. Demers, just for a moment, you've hit the, exceeded the five-minute mark, so we would just, if you want another two minutes, we can ask the council to vote, so I imagine you do.
If you would please.
Yep.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question. Did you say 300 people?
Yes.
300 people what?
Cars were broken into since January 17th of this year.
Okay. We can, we can give you time for questions in that sort of manner, just a moment, so we'll just, we don't need a roll call for this. So all in favor of extending? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I forgot where I was. So anyway, this past, this past Friday when we had the other intrusion, I let an officer come in the house and I let him watch all three videos and went through all three videos. And he was certain that it was the same person. And again, nothing is done. I made three copies of this tape for the Police Department, for the District Attorney, and for myself. The District Attorney calls my wife on Friday, this past Friday, and asks my wife, "Do we agree with this sentence on this child?" And he's a 16-year-old child, by the way. And she was well, she had no idea that this had continued to happen and hasn't seen any of the videos. I've been told Officer Genkos, Detective Genkos, has been handling the matter. But the most important part I want to get to before my two minutes is up is, listen, this is how it is. I lived in Southbridge all my life, okay? Between 12 o'clock at night and 2 o'clock in the morning, our cruisers, every single one of them, are rotating Central Street, and Hamilton Street, and down by Lazo's Cafe, and down by The Lounge. That's where they all are. They're not in the problem area. They know there's a problem in the mechanic, Hotwell, Chapin, Williams, Elm Street, Everett Street. They know there's a problem there. It's consistent. It's every three or four weeks, this person is hitting these areas. Now, if you come into town at 3 o'clock in the morning, what do you see? I've gone to the casino, I come back to town, 3 o'clock in the morning, what do I see? I'll see a cop down, sitting in his car in the AO parking lot down in Sandersdale. Or I'll come, and I come by the Southbridge Credit Union and I'll see two cruisers back and forth like this, talking to each other back and forth. Who's patrolling the streets? Who's looking for this? My nephew sat Friday and Saturday night this week, started at 2 o'clock in the morning and walked Hotwell, Chapin, Dresser, Williams, Forest Ave, and Marcy Street and Elm Street. Not one cruiser went by him. In two nights, not one cruiser. And I have a lot more to say, but I don't want to take up your time all night. But I give you this, I give you this, not to read right now, but I give you this to read maybe when you get home, so you will better understand what the law is as far as police protecting you, me, and any other citizen in Massachusetts or in the country, for that fact. This here will tell you that the Supreme Court tells you that the police have no right to protect you whatsoever. No right to protect you. So what is your option to protect yourself and your family? If the Supreme Court tells you that the Police Department does not have to protect you, what recourse do you have?
Mr. Demers, you-
You have one.
Your two, your extra two-
One more second.
Sure.
You have one recourse, and that's to protect yourself. You must buy a gun, you must have it on your nightstand, and you must protect yourself.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Carrasco?
Just as a point also to what Mr. Demers has said today. I also was vandalized and they came to my home and broke into my car also. So I am aware of what's happening in our neighborhood. It is something that is very scary. I have myself put motion lights, done different things to my property to also provide extra surveillance, because that is happening in our neighborhood.
As have I.
Any other questions?
I was also vandalized.
Any other questions?
I was too.
Thank you, Mr. Demers.
Okay.
Do we have any other residents who would like to come forward? If so, name and address, please.
John Palowski, 3 Jenison Street. Hope if someone does get a gun, they don't shoot to kill. Now, you can shoot a person in the knee. I mean, there's, watch a lot of cowboy movies. I don't know. That's 3 Jenison Street, Southbridge. The reason I'm here tonight, now, I didn't mean to say to Mr. Demers any disrespect, I'm just, we don't, we don't, it's too bad we can't buy tasers. I was concerned. I learned last week from a friend in Sturbridge who's keeping up on issues related to the landfill, that the landfill operator has put in a special request to expedite being able to expand their operations, a waiver, they're asking for a waiver. And what surprised me is that the meeting was going to be held in Sturbridge this coming Wednesday. And I don't know if someone else helped. I did complain to a few counselors, but I did send an email, a friend of mine sent an email, and they are having the meeting in Town Hall this coming Wednesday. But what concerns me is that this isn't the DEP, this is MEPA, which is Division of the Department of Energy and the Environment. And they're asking for comments from town boards, town officials, and citizens. But this has got to be done by May 8th. And you folks, I learned about this after you had your, around the same time I saw your agenda, so it's not something you could bring up tonight. So I don't think you're even going to have a concern. I mean, a meeting to discuss this waiver at a recent subcommittee meeting, I pretty much got the feel that none of you are for an expansion. And there's some problems. I don't want to put anyone in a funny position, but what happens down at the Board of Health, their attorney is compensated by the landfill operator, and he's very cooperative, and it's his opinion, and it's, but they have more land that's site assigned than what's actually site assigned. Even their original application for the last minor site assignment was for 82 acres, 32 of which is used for disposal. Now, somehow, some of you may remember when I asked Mr. Clark a few years ago, he said there was 175 acres site assigned. So there's a difference there, and it needs to be addressed. And the Board of Health is not, how can I put it? Well, they're just not too anxious to discover why we have different numbers coming up for how much is site assigned. Now, in this permit, I read part of it, it suggests that there's archaeological property up there that is already covered and is in the landfill. And I looked into a little more, this is in Charlton. So they're actually claiming that some of this site-assigned land is in Charlton. But I've checked with Charlton, there's nothing site assigned there. And what's happened, people don't realize this, they think that the, like, for example, that $200,000 fine that Casella received from the DEP for the landslide, people thought, I think locally, that it's the DEP's job to take care of everything. But the DEP thinks that most of the policing is being done by the local Board of Health. So a lot of this stuff has to happen. For example, there was a fire at the landfill, April 10th, in one of the wells. Now, everywhere else in the country, there's a concern when there's a fire, if there is a liner, that the liner's melted. And there could be problems. They have to put the fire out in a certain way. I talked to the fire chief from a different community in Worcester County, who doesn't like the way the fire was put out. And I don't think the fire was necessarily put out by our Police Department. I think it may have been put out by Casella. I'm not sure, because no one seems to know about this fire. I only found out about that through someone in the fire control business. But I know we have a landfill oversight committee. They don't meet very often. I think they're meeting this week. But we got to, well, in fact, Mr. Demers kind of gave me a good segue without any intention. I've never met the gentleman, unless we met when we were younger. But just as some people may feel like they need to do something to protect their own property, I feel strongly that our Board of Health, maybe because it just, they're not, it's not because it's a town of Southbridge. I'm not criticizing our Board of Health, but I don't see, thank you, five minutes is almost up. We got to do something. We're not, maybe get the Commonwealth to have a solid waste authority. It's more than we can handle responsibly, not due to a lack of skills, but due to a lack of resources.
Mr. Palowski, do you want-
Could I have another two minutes? Because it's just, I won't use the whole two minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You know, a lot of us in town and in neighboring towns have had to spend a lot of time. I'm still tired from the last, from the last round, because it, this, I hope some of you, and a lot of you work during the day, because if you can show up Wednesday, other people in town that don't want the landfill to expand, I've been hearing a lot of complaints about smells and the like, you know? We got to take control of this. And like I've said, if we ourselves, and we're at the end of it, we don't have to presume that they're going to fill in. I'm convinced we can hire responsible engineers, and at least on paper, it looks like we can take in one-third the trash and make twice as much money. But that's just on paper. And as we all know, like, that $100 million was on paper, we didn't see that. So let's, I just hope some of you can, can help those of us that are activists or factivists, whatever you want to call us, and at least express a concern with MEPA that perhaps we shouldn't have this fast-track, and we should take things slow, be prudent. And thank you for, thank you for your service of the town and, please, people, Wednesday, 3 o'clock, right here, then they're going to go up to the landfill and look at things. Perhaps they can explain the fire and the landslide and some of the other issues up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
I'm just, Mr. Palowski, I'm confused, because now you said 3:00 PM here, and earlier in the statement was Sturbridge. Where's this meeting held?
Oh, this is what, I'm sorry, I was inarticulate. As of Friday afternoon, the meeting was going to be at the Southbridge Savings Bank in Sturbridge, which really annoyed me no end. I meant to write a poetic letter, I didn't say what I thought. And I was amazed that the, I know of another person that wrote a letter, and by mid-afternoon, and I did discuss it with a respectful town counselor that gives everyone's everyone's ear. I don't know if he had something to do with it. If it was done from two citizens writing a letter showing concern, I am so impressed with MEPA that maybe this will proceed well. But MEPA told me it's going to be in Town Hall Wednesday at 3:00, Town Hall, Southbridge. So thank you for asking, Counsel Carrasco.
Thank you. Not to be argumentative or, and I just want to make some comments because a number of things were said. First off, we were, the council was made very well aware of the situation that went on. Numerous emails from Mr. Pecos and from the Board of Health and Casella directly in terms of the process, the events that happened in regard to the fire, and we've been updated on a regular basis, to the point that our most recent weekly report has April 21st, the April 13th fire, and the response there, and then landfill operations, and with the bullet point of Casella continuing to monitor the landfill gas well, well six, and the adjacent wells for smoke heat, presence of carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, no further changes have been noted. Full incident report was submitted to the Board of Health and Town Manager. Sanborn Head, on behalf of Casella, is drafting an action plan to investigate the cap in the area, and it's all being submitted to the Mass DEP. And that's just a little blurb where we've had bigger ones in the last couple of weeks. So we were all informed, and questions have been asked and answered, and so just wanted the public to know that it wasn't pushed over our heads and, or swept under the rug. We have actually been informed right from the day that it happened, Mr. Pecos immediately pretty much sent out an email, as he has done on many major incidences, whether it be the weather-related or other incidences since his start here. So it's been great that he's been able to relay all this information. So I just wanted the public to know that we do know about it. It's not a secret. And I encourage you certainly to go out and to attend the MEPA information and have your voices heard. That's certainly your right, and it's our community, we want to make sure that things are done well here. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Sure. Thank you. Any other residents? Again, just name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent Abraham, 26 Franklin Terrace. I am a member of the Southbridge School Committee, speaking on my own behalf. Mr. Chairman, first, as you may recall at the last meeting of the Town Council on April 13th, I asked the chairman to look into the assertion that some on the town side were trying to discourage and pressure the superintendent of schools from carrying out her duties as directed by the school committee. I will tonight point out to the chairman the email exchange between Counselor Vecia and Acting Town Manager. This exchange took place on April 15th, two days after I spoke here at the Citizens Forum. The substance of those emails certainly shows intent to apply pressure on the superintendent. And as a recipient of those emails, Mr. Chairman, you can release them to show that what I'm saying is accurate. Second, Mr. Chairman, on Friday, April 17th, you and the Acting Town Manager took your song and dance act on the road, so to speak, with your comments in an article in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette. Again, truth is expected in such articles when our public officials are quoted, but clearly, it's not a requirement with this mutual admiration society. It would take more time than I have tonight to point out the fallacies in your song and dance routine, so I'll just make two general observations. First, Mr. Chairman, if, I will just make, it is clear, Mr. Chairman, that our schools would receive far more attention from you if somehow they could be listed as a charity. Maybe we could rename a school in your honor and build a statue. In the article, getting back to the article, the Acting Town Manager said that in his 40 years, he's never experienced a school budget presented with no dialogue. That just may be because this town manager seems far more familiar with monologue than dialogue. Mr. Chairman, in the TNG article, the Acting Town Manager had something ambiguous to say about the town charter. I would like to say something unambiguous about the charter. Regardless of the Town Council's intent or the stated intent of the Acting Town Manager, the town charter states in Section 7, Acting Town Manager, "Any vacancy in the office of the Town Manager shall be filled as soon as possible by the Town Council." The term of service of- The term of service of any person as Acting Town Manager may not exceed twelve months." Mr. Pecos began here on June thirtieth, twenty-fourteen, and therefore cannot serve beyond June thirtieth, twenty-fifteen, for free or otherwise, without violating the town charter. Finally, Mr. Chairman, this Town Council, under your leadership, has spent a year publicly bashing, undermining, and scapegoating the schools and the school committee for all the ills of Southbridge. And there is some indication, at least as I see it, that you've had an effect on the climate in Southbridge. Those who are inattentive have confused the huffing and puffing on the town's side against the schools as being the same as actual leadership. No institution could withstand the orchestrated barrage that this council has hurled toward the schools. You've spent a year adding to the woes of the schools, and as the saying goes, if you break it, you own it. I sincerely hope you have an Act Two in mind, Mr. Chairman, because the town will look to your expertise to fix the schools that you have criticized to the point of demoralization. Good luck with that, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. I will say I respectfully disagree. I know Councilor, a couple of councils have comments or so forth.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just, I, I want to just address this as respectfully as I can. Um, number one, at, at no point in time has myself or this council, uh, thank you for leaving, Mr. Abrahamson, uh, but at no point in time has this council intended to belay, belittle the school department, or, um...
Mr. Chair!
Mr. Abrahamson, at the moment...
I was addressed!
Nonetheless, the council has the floor at the moment. When he finishes, because he addressed you, if you'd like to respond, you're so, may so.
One of the things that, um, again, like I was saying, it's been said that this Town Council has been trying to cut the school budget. Um, and at no point in time has this Town Council cut the school budget. From day one that the budget process has started, from day one, there has been a two percent increase to that school budget. Unfortunately, unfortunately, seeing the, the decision that this council, some of the councilors did not agree, but the majority of this council pushed forward, and we decided not to raise taxes, not to levy our taxes. And therefore, we sent a clear message, not only to our community, to our department heads, to the whole town of South, we sent a clear message saying that we are not gonna continue to raise and continue to give money to, whether it be departments, whether it be to, uh, uh, school department, wherever, until we are able to control our spending. And the only thing that happened, to my knowledge, the school department decided to push forward and go atop of the two percent increase that was already promised to them, and I believe there was other additional funds that were found that clearly almost totaled a million-dollar increase to their budget proposed by the town. They went ahead and decided to present a three million plus on top of it. Again, what you guys do on your side with the budget is, unfortunately, we have no control over it. I wish we did. I wish we did. I wish we did have more control in regards to some of the spending, because that's what we're trying to, we're not, department heads are not happy that we are cutting DPW staff, that we're cutting Police Department, fire, uh, you know, it's not the pleasant thing to do. But unfortunately, unfortunately, this is the reality, that we have to make some tough decisions for the better of our community. Because if we continue to raise taxes just to try to fix a supposed system that's been broken for decades by feeding them more money, that's not the option. When, if, you know, we're gonna talk on Wednesday night, uh, during our, the school budget meeting, because I do have many concerns, and I'm not gonna bring those concerns here, because this is not the time and place for it. I will address why you, again, you wanna come up here and go after this council, and I'm glad you're speaking on your behalf and not on the school committee, although some may interpret it totally different.
Well, you may, but I made it clear, I said I'm speaking on my behalf.
And again, and again, and I said, thank you.
Am I gonna get a chance to answer this or not?
You, you will have a chance, but at the moment, he still has the floor.
It's a soliloquy.
And, and I said, thank you. I said, thank you for speaking on your behalf and not representing the whole school committee. Again, respectfully, I say thank you. The reason I said, thank you for leaving, Mr. Abrahamson, is because you make these statements and you walk out, knowing that maybe one out of the nine, or maybe our town manager wants to address some of the things that you have said, but you're walking out the, the hall. So that's why I said thank you for leaving, because again, it was because...
If I don't have some time to speak...
Mr. Abrahamson, you will have, you will have time, however, at the time, at this particular moment, the council has the chair. Mr. Abrahamson, I'm sorry.
Yes, you can roll me out of order, and I...
And I will.
And I am leaving.
You're out of order, Mr. Abrahamson.
You may continue, Councilor Carrasco, if you so desire.
Again, if someone is gonna come up here, and though we might not have to agree or disagree, we will respectfully answer you or address your concerns. This is the first time in two years that I've been on this council and seen this happen. Unfortunately, people are showing their true colors. Um, and I just, I just don't understand how this council can be attacked and not expected to just respectfully answer. At no point in time am I demeaning the school committee, at no point in time. If we didn't want to push this school department forward, the two percent wouldn't be there, the increase, they would have been, they would have had a level-funded budget, which many communities do. Um, again, I want the best for my children, I want the best for all of our children. Are things not the way they should? Absolutely. Have we blamed them, is it a blame game? Absolutely not. This, this has been decades, both on the town and on the s, s, school side. Both the Town Council have passed, made some serious mistakes, and also past school committees have made serious mistakes. If we're gonna continue to bash each other publicly, we ain't moving forward. We ain't moving forward. That's all I got to say.
Just briefly, uh, what I would, I'm going to suggest...
I want to apologize for my outburst, and, uh, I will wait patiently for my, my turn.
Sure. Uh, so what I, I'm going to, to do is, I'm going to let everybody have their say, and rather than encourage any sort of debate back and forth, and I will give you a minute or two to state your piece at the end. I know I have Council Clements and then the manager, and perhaps others. Go ahead, Councilor Clements.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have no response to Mr. Abrahamson, I don't think this is the, the right place to, to be in this spirit of things, so I'm holding all comments on the school side of things. Good luck with that.
Thank you, Mr. Pecos.
Mr. Abrahamson and members of the council, um, all the comments that I offered to the newspaper, I offered in private to the superintendent approximately, I'm gonna say roughly two weeks before that story appeared. Um, the, um, financial mismanagement in the school for several years now is well-known. That's not my observation. Um, it's been brought to my attention by literally dozens of people. It was so bad that the town manager, and this is singular in my career, has to sign the bills and the purchase orders for the school department on a weekly basis, because there is apparently not a sufficient level of trust that the school can do it on its own, such that I must look over the school's shoulder. I do not enjoy that responsibility, and point of fact, it takes a substantial amount of time, uh, on my part, and I really do wish that there was a confidence level such that I could hand that back to the appropriate school authorities. But frankly, there is not that level of trust. When the school department brought forth a budget that was approximately three-hundred-thousand dollars over the balanced budget that I had laid out, uh, back in January, when that budget came forward about, I think, five weeks ago now to the EXS Subcommittee, um, within twenty-four hours, uh, the financial team here in Town Hall was working to try to provide, uh, three-hundred-sixty-one thousand additional dollars for the school budget. Mind you now, we could have said there is no more money, we could have said the school budget did not meet the parameter, we could have said many things. But what we said, in the spirit of compromise, was, let's try to find the three-hundred-sixty-one thousand dollars that the school department appears to need. Now, that was on top of the fact, I remind you, that when it became necessary to reduce the overall, uh, budget because of, uh, the decision not to increase taxation next year, we asked the school department to absorb three-hundred-thousand of that cut, and I willingly took five-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, over double the cut on the shoulders of the town, the side of the budget. The school superintendent, the business agent, the CFO of the town, and myself met and had a great constructive meeting, I think about three days after the school department brought that budget forward, might have been a few more days. And within a very short time, we had come up with a couple of hundred thousand towards that deficit of three-sixty-one, and the superintendent and the school's financial officer indicated that they would work toward trying to make reductions in the school budget, uh, to close the remaining six, uh, one-hundred-sixty-one-thousand-dollar gap. We laid out for them, uh, four or five areas where we thought they could very easily close that gap, and a point of fact, we thought that they could save far, far, far beyond that hundred-sixty-one thousand. And my invitation to the superintendent and your financial officer was not to cut those dollars and then have it reduced from the school budget. My invitation to them was that I would support, and it's only a recommendation authority, this council is the appropriating authority, but I would support allowing the school to retain those dollars, and I said frankly, I thought the potential savings was in the multi-hundreds of thousands, and could well be in excess of a half a million dollars if the school administration and committee were to pursue these several ideas that we had laid out. I still believe that's the case. When, about a week later, I heard rumors, rumors, mind you, that the school had passed a budget that was two-point-seven-million higher than the budget that had been officially presented two weeks earlier, I had my secretary call the school department to inquire, and she was told that, yes, in fact, three days earlier, the school committee had passed a new budget. There had been no notification to Town Hall, there had been no budget sent to my office, there had been no official communication whatsoever by anyone. The inquiry elicited, um, the fact that there was a new budget, and my secretary very respectfully asked, could we please have it? It was sent up a few hours later. When the budget arrived, and I compared it to what had been presented some weeks earlier, I was confused. And so I called the superintendent and I said, which budget is your budget? Is it the one we've been working on for several weeks now, or is it this new one? And she said the school committee had directed her to, um, make this new two-point-seven-million-dollar, um, additional budget the official budget. So I asked if she would please come up to my office and meet with myself, uh, the CFO, and please bring Aaron with her. And at that meeting, I repeated to her all my concerns about all the areas where the school had yet failed to perform and to demonstrate to anybody's satisfaction, my own or anyone else's, that they were addressing those areas of mismanagement. And frankly, what I said to the superintendent is, why would the town, why would I recommend, as town manager, an increase in a departmental budget, when the mismanagement that is already, frankly, overwhelmingly apparent, has not been addressed and we have received no satisfaction that it has been addressed? And her answer to me was, that's a good question. And so I said, well frankly, I can't recommend this budget, I can't even work toward trying to close this financial gap until we have some kind of satisfaction that the issues that are already there are repaired. Or to say it in short order, why provide two-point-seven-million more dollars to be mismanaged when the original twenty-five-point-eight million is already mismanaged? That's my question. And to that, I have not received any answer, but I have begun getting a couple emails now from the school department, expressing an interest in exploring some of those areas that we put out there that needed exploration, and one of them is closing the school department building, moving the staff into this building or other quarters, and the question has been asked, would we partner? Of course we'll partner, it was our suggestion to begin with. Would we partner? Yes. Is there savings, uh, on the order of magnitude of, um, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands? Yes. I take it as a very hopeful sign that perhaps we will begin working together on that. It is unfortunate, and I hope it's not a response that is the product of the newspaper story, but I am, however, suspect, since the arrival of the overture did come some days after the newspaper story, and in fact, the newspaper story and the public discussion was indeed a catalyst to begin the conversation. I want to assure you, sir, I am far more interested in dialogue than I am monologue. I have done nothing since I've come to town as your acting town manager but engage everyone I can possibly engage in conversation, discussion, to elicit forward change. I am just now beginning to see that from the school department, and I applaud it.
I will say just briefly, a couple of quick things. One, uh, in this last ten months or so, uh, with this current sitting council, uh, one of the big initiatives that, that we've put forth, uh, that I've lobbied for since I've been up here, has been increasing dialogue with the school department. Uh, the, over the last several years, as, uh, one former chair put out, pointed out, rather, uh, we only meet with the school department when there's a problem, to which I always argued that is part of the problem, need to be more proactive. This council has had three, I believe, council of the whole, and school committee joint meetings, uh, which is more than, has probably been done since the Prop Two-and-a-half override ten or so years ago. Uh, so there have been great efforts to increase dialogue, uh, increase a cooperative spirit. Uh, in recent months, uh, I would, I would argue that it's, it's not the council that's necessarily undermining that, but, uh, nonetheless, it has been. Uh, in terms of the budget increase itself, while three-hundred-thousand may be a modest increase, uh, three million, in my personal opinion, is, is a ludicrous increase. That is, the entirety of our police department budget is three million dollars that we would, that the school department would have us increase. Uh, as someone, much as yourself, uh, being a former educator, knowing where money can go in a school, uh, and where it actually goes oftentimes, different stories, and for me, and, and I don't have the article in front of me, um, I don't recall what quotes they used or didn't use, um, but I will say this much, that I, one quote I do remember that they used is, is something to the effect that, in my personal opinion anyways, the problems facing the school district are not primarily fiscal in nature, but more so the carousel that is administration and turnover and so forth. We have had, we are in our third year of the new middle high school, and including actings and interims, we've had five principals. Uh, since Joe Byly left ten or so years ago, I can't even tell you how many principals we've had, uh, the number of superintendents, and that's just at the high school, never mind the elementary schools, which have had a number of turn, uh, administrative turnovers as well. And for me, and, and this is my last piece, it's just, for me, this, the analogy I look at as, is if, if you have a twenty-four-year-old son who, uh, you know, can't hold down a steady job, is constantly in and out of relationships, has totaled two of his last three vehicles, and has twenty-five-thousand dollars in credit card debt, and he says, Dad, I need fifty grand, do you give it to him? Or do you hold that child more accountable and ask him to take for himself and work for himself, correct those issues, because at some point, you have to do for yourself? Uh, and for me, this is, and I think this is what I said in the newspaper, uh, in this situation, I think this is throwing good money after bad. And with that, I will just, go ahead, Councilor Carrasco.
Again, um, in this...
Again, and this is directly to Mr. Abrahamson. I apologize for being out of order, but again, it irks, we're here working hard, just like you are on the other side. But to come up here and try to point the finger, at no point in time in your statement were admissions made about school committee members or school committees in the past making errors. Tonight, it was just about us, our song and dance. Well, if it's our song and dance, you wrote the song.
Are there any other councils with questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll give you a couple, two minutes, I think that's fair at this point.
Mr. Chairman, you know, in the spirit of dialogue, I've heard a lot of monologue tonight, and I've heard a lot of the same stuff repeated that was repeated in the newspaper. Let me ask you one question. Who sets the budget for the schools?
According to the town charter, the council is the appropriating authority.
Right, and that's correct.
It is the legislative authority, and it is senior to the school committee.
Yes, absolutely. So your objection is simply that the superintendent indicated what was needed for us children. Not that she, she can't demand it, she can't demand one penny from this council. You are the ones that vote the budget. You just don't want her to say it. That is so disingenuous. You know, you can say, oh, well, those schools don't deserve that, they don't deserve, you can say all that, you say that with your vote. You already said it when you restricted the town manager to how much he can raise in taxes, you know. So to blame the schools, you set the amount. You can set it at nothing, but that's not going to stop the schools from needing things. And if you don't like that, I'm sorry. Our superintendent's supposed to say what's needed, and we've asked her to do that, just as you asked your, our town manager to create a budget within parameters. I don't know what more I can say, except that we have it clear, that's the one clear thing I think everyone should be able to understand. The town council sets the budget for the schools. The schools can demand all they want, but they cannot get one penny.
Mr. Abrahamson, your time is up, sir. Thank you. Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to you and the rest of the town council. If I recall, at the budget meeting for the EHS on the first school committee, they came to us with that 2%, $300,000. A week later, they're on TV, and they're asking for $3 million. And that's all I have to say about that, and I am not going to do dialogue back and forth like this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just correct that.
There was nothing directed to you individually.
But that was wrong.
And your time has expired at this point.
That was wrong, so you don't care that that was wrong?
There are misstatements that are made up on this dais, Mondays and Tuesdays on a regular basis, sir. Councilor Steves.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to be brief about this. As I see it, the whole process until we actually make a final vote is a process of negotiation. If the school committee proposes 3 million dollar extra budget, it is our responsibility to sit down and talk to them and figure, okay, where can we meet? In the middle, somewhere in the middle, it's probably, given the financial situation, it'll probably be significantly less than half of what you guys want. Unfortunately, that's the way things are. I was not one of the people who supported the idea of austerity at the beginning, and I made that clear. I am not a, I'm not a huge, I'm not a fan of blanket cutting. I do think that we, that there are some things that the schools and other departments need that may go beyond what the absolute bottom line, no new taxes thing is.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
But we still have to figure that out.
We are bordering on an agenda item here. We are well out of order. The citizens member had his five and seven minutes, and we are now debating amongst council as to what the school department needs. That is an agenda item, and I ask that we move on with the council's agenda that is set before us, and if we need further meeting on this, then we set that. But we are bordering on an illegal action here by talking about a substance that is not on our agenda for this evening. And there should be no back and forth dialogue at Citizens Forum.
I vote to move the question.
Thank you. There's no question to move. However, your point of order is sustained.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
You are correct.
And if I have anything to say, I have tomorrow night to say it.
Sure thing. Thank you. Are there any other residents who would like to speak for Citizens Forum? If so, please state your name and address, please.
It's hard to follow that up. Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Health. And I just wanted to say about the MEPA meeting, no, we didn't know about this. I'm on the Conservation Commission. I was not told about this. This is all very secretive. I applaud John for getting up here and telling people. I would encourage people to attend that meeting at 3:00 on Wednesday, meeting here. And there is a landfill oversight meeting this Thursday, April 30th, at 6:30 PM in the Veterans Room, and I would encourage people to go.
Thank you. Are there any other residents who would like to come forward for Citizens Forum? Seeing none, we move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm, and I'm going to correct this because it's actually mistaken here, vote to confirm the appointment of Lisa Dobney of Southbridge to the Bicentennial Committee effective immediately through March 31st, 2017.
Move.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Just as a quick note, both Ms. Dobney, Mrs. Dobney and her husband James, who will be the next agenda item, have served on the Bicentennial Committee in terms of attending and voicing their concerns, and have been extremely helpful assets in a number of areas. So I think the, though there's no vote, certainly the Bicentennial Committee certainly agrees to that. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of James Dobney of Southbridge to the Bicentennial Committee effective immediately through March 31st, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 11, vote to transfer $4,500 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 1.132.5781 to Town Manager Search Committee Account Number 3.589.5899.90, I'm sorry, .123.9091 to provide additional funding needed for the contract with the Collins Center.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Councilor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I didn't see anything in our packet on the reason why the $4,500 transfer. Could you just explain that?
Sure. Councilor Carrasco.
There was a set amount used, set aside, excuse me, for the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was 20,000 that was set by the previous council with the contract with municipal resources. There was about, it's an estimate, between 10,000 and 12,000 of that contract money that was used. So there's still remaining money left over. This is to fulfill the new contract that we have with the Collins Center.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 12, vote to create a revolving account for the Volunteer Holiday Vision Committee to maintain and execute distribution of yearly holiday decor.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Councilor Manah.
I believe I will abstain from this because I am on that committee. Should I, should I be?
You do not need to, because you're not, assuming you're not making a monetary gain as a result, but if you choose to abstain, so be it.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that went. I remember there was some, last year, there was some discussion, and I just, not on this, on another committee.
As long as you're not making money, you're good.
And there were like four councils or something on the same committee.
Oh, yeah, I recall what you're talking about, and ultimately, that was not necessary.
Okay, then I won't be abstaining. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 13, vote to ratify the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Southbridge and Charlton.
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Councilor Vecchia.
Thank you very much. Through the chairman to the town manager, if I read this whole contract correctly, we're going to give them ownership of the infrastructure, our infrastructure in Charlton?
The infrastructure in Charlton, which is currently owned by Southbridge.
Yes.
We will be giving to them.
Okay. If you look on page 7I, maintenance, Southbridge will provide for the maintenance of the infrastructure? So even though we're giving them ownership, we're going to have to pay for the repairs?
In the annual water department budget, there is a certain amount of money for repair of the infrastructure. That's for water line breaks and repairing damage, automobile accidents, things like that. The fact that they own their own system does not diminish the fact that in the water rate is money that's being paid by their ratepayers to maintain both our system and their system. So this provision lets them get some of that money to maintain.
My question, what if it's a major repair?
If it's a major repair, then the way the formula works is, at the end of the year, when we close the books, we declare a surplus typically, not all years, but some years, which is the difference between how much money we raised by water rates and how much we spent on the operating budget, capital, bonds, et cetera. We take that amount of money, that balance, we subtract from it the amount of water unpaid receivables that Charlton customers own us, we subtract the cost of any capital projects which are necessary to, which are completed on the system in Southbridge, but which are to the benefit of Charlton and Southbridge together. And when that's done, there's a small amount of money left. That amount of money gets divvied up according to the percent of water that was paid for by Charlton residents as it compares to the percent of water that's paid for by Southbridge residents. At the current time, that percent is 4%. I'm sorry, it's 3.3%.
Another question. Termination. It says Charlton reserves the right to terminate agreement if it is determined to be in the best interest of Charlton.
Yes, with one-year notice.
One-year notice. Is that a good, why did you agree to that? I'd just like to know, you're thinking on that.
Well, you can't have an agreement which is binding on the parties with no escape clause. That's not lawful in Massachusetts for any municipal agreements. You have to provide some kind of an escape clause. This agreement will be good for 20 or 30 years, and despite our collective best ability to foresee the future, there will be unforeseen events, and so you must build in an escape clause for the parties both, and that cuts both ways. We can also cancel the agreement.
It says that, this agreement says that. How much water are we going to sell to Charlton at this time?
At the current time, they're guaranteed up to 200,000 gallons, provided it's available. This agreement will provide for an increase in that amount to 500,000 gallons. It is unlikely that they will take that anytime in the next 10 or 15 years, and it's further dependent upon the town getting a new permit from DEP to allow us to pump that much water.
So you think we're going to be pumping 200,000 gallons a year up there?
We actually only pump about 70,000 gallons to Charlton a year right now, and I don't expect to see that number jump dramatically in the next two or three years. It may increase once the loop, the so-called loop to the schools and the contaminated area is complete, but it's going to be a many, many year buildup of that loop.
How much money are you talking, how much money do we get for 70,000 gallons?
Heather, help me. Do you know the total amount of dollars we took in from Charlton last year? I can go find that in the office, but...
I'm just curious.
Well, the system, I think, brought in about 1.2 million, and they're about 3.3% of that. So if someone can do quick math in their head, that sounds...
$30,000?
Correct.
$33,000?
You know, I didn't pick on you, just for the record, but yeah. You're the accountant, so I'm going with it.
You just said it's the much money you're talking. You're not talking much money.
No, a lot, no.
All right. I have one other question. I know she's coming up here, but I have one other question. If businesses wanted to come into Southbridge that needed water, we get lucky, we get the right person to be a salesman for this town, do we have enough water for these new businesses coming in?
Yeah, right now, we're pumping pretty much what our maximum average daily yield is, what we're allowed to pump. We're right now involved in getting that permit increased, and we've got the watershed capability to do it easily. So I don't think there's going to be any problem at all with satisfying Southbridge customers. As a practical matter, we don't see any large users on the horizon right now.
I'm sorry, what if some big industry wanted to come in and needed water?
Well, we could afford it, provided it's not like a million gallons a day, but if it's like 100,000 gallons a day, which is an, that's a Coca-Cola bottling plant, 100,000 gallons a day, we could accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. She wants to say something, I'm sorry.
I just, I have the number for what the IMA is, which is in total Charlton. It was about, for one quarter, was about $30,000.
$30,000?
One quarter for the IMA, double that for all of Charlton, so probably about 60,000 times by four quarters.
So you're talking 240,000 for the whole year? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Just as a disclaimer, this does not necessarily bind Charlton to it. They still have to vote and agree to it as well.
Just one note for the council before you leave this agenda item. I would be extremely remiss if I didn't say this. This negotiation has been going on for five years. I think the councilors are all aware, and the public may not be aware of that. We've really worked it hard for the last seven, eight months, and I want the council to know that throughout, there's been two people who've really engaged in extraordinary hard work on this. The first is Heather Blakely, our acting DPW director. Heather has been an incredible fountainhead of knowledge and institutional memory about this, and on many occasions, when I might have been inclined to be more generous, Heather has been a steady voice representing Southbridge's interest in making sure that that mistake did not happen. She's been a very aggressive advocate, and I thought the council should be aware of that. I also want to recognize Robin Leo Craven, Robin Leo Craven, my counterpart in Charlton. Robin has been an incredibly tireless worker trying to make this deal happen, far more than any effort I've made, believe me. And on many occasions, when it looked like we were at a dead end, Robin would work very hard to make sure that we got around that dead end and came up with something creative. So I really would very much like the council to be aware of what those two people have done. Without them, this would absolutely positively not be in front of you tonight, so just wanted to give a shout out to both of them. Great work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 14, vote to accept the town of Southbridge policy on use of town council with the purpose of preventative legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the town, and proper management of the legal budget within appropriation. This will be the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Just briefly, we'll go through this as quick as we can. It is the purpose of this policy to ensure that access to town council is processed in a manner which accomplishes the purposes of preventative legal advice to avoid expensive lawsuits, proper defensive claims made against the town, proper fiscal management of the legal budget within appropriation. Section one, authority to hire counsel. The town manager is authorized by the town charter to appoint a town attorney or counsel and special counsel, subject to confirmation of such appointments by the full council. No other board, committee, or commission may employ a legal counsel without permission of the town manager except the town treasurer solely for the purposes of tax title services and the CFO treasurer solely for the purpose of bond counsel services. The only exception to this provision of the charter is the school committee who is authorized to employ counsel, access to counsel. The charter delegates to the town manager the authority to manage the town attorney, special counsel budget, as well as access of the town attorney, special counsel services. Any board, committee, commission, or employee who wishes access to town attorney, special counsel must submit a request to the town manager on the legal services request form attached to this policy. The town manager or in his or her absence, the interim town manager, will act to approve or deny the request within five days. The request form will be returned to the department and a copy sent to the chief financial officer of the town, the town attorney, and to special counsel if the specialty services will be engaged. The authority to assign legal service work to the town attorney or special counsel is solely the responsibility of the town manager. If the request is approved, the town attorney, special counsel is authorized to provide the legal services requested. If the town attorney, special counsel is contacted for any purpose by any party without an approved authorization form, he or she is hereby directed to advise the person contacting them that further discussion is not authorized. And I think we've noted this each time, but in that section two point seven, it's supposed to be form, not from. Two point eight, if denied or not properly authorized by the attached form, the town attorney, special counsel is hereby authorized that any services provided will be in violation of the express will of the town council, acting by and through its town manager, as well as a violation of the provisions of the town charter and will not be paid. The chief financial officer of the town is hereby directed to ensure that no invoice for legal services will be paid unless a legal services request form has authorized the services. In certain emergency situations, legal services may be verbally authorized by the town manager or in his or her absence by the interim town manager, but the authorizing party must complete and approve a legal services request form as outlined above as soon as practicable. Town council access to the town attorney and special councils. The individual members of the council recognize that their authority under statute of the charter is exercised through the entire council when acting as a body in a lawful meeting. As such, council members agree that they will access the town attorney or special councils only pursuant to a vote of the council. Once so authorized by the council, the chairman of the town council, the town manager, or another member of the council when specifically delegated by the council will contact the town attorney or special counsel and request service consistent with the council's vote. Individual members of the town council may contact the town attorney or special counsel directly without seeking a vote of the council for advice on conflict of interest or personal liability issues involving that councilor, that council member personally. In the case of such consultation, the council member will advise the town manager for purposes of billing coordination. Votes of the council authorizing access to legal services will be promptly reported to the CFO by the town manager for billing and payment coordination. Direction to the town attorney, special counsel, by passage of this policy, the town manager is directed to communicate this policy to the town attorney, special counsel, and to relate the council and town manager's intent for the town attorney, special counsel to abide by its terms. And that is it. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Vecchia?
Yep.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Council Estrada?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Morierati?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. We move on to agenda item number fifteen, councilor's forum, and we'll start with Councilor Steves tonight.
I don't have anything today, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Vecchia.
When the citizen, Mr. Demers, got up here tonight, I was a little taken back that he's saying nothing is being done by the police to solve these break-ins. He said there was three hundred break-ins since the beginning of January, and another two hundred that was not reported that he knows about. And the police are not patrolling a lot of areas in Southbridge. I was broken into, and the police department didn't do much for me, and he quoted a federal law that the police doesn't really have to protect us, that we should all go buy guns. He was up here, everybody knows him, he's got a nickname, I think it's Porky. We should do something. The man was up here. If it's true, we should look into it. I don't tell the police how to run their business, but I do know from my own circumstances, they didn't help me, my place is broken into, and he comes up here and he starts talking about break-ins, okay? So I just think somebody should look into this. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Council Vandal?
Thank you. I was wondering where we are with the building on West Street. I asked a few months back, you know, that somebody could take a look at it and probably take it down because it's really an ice ore, and I don't want to, I don't want to forget about it. Do you?
Sure. We've had multiple discussions with the owner, and he keeps promising us, promising us he'll do something. Unfortunately, it's not a building, so the law that allows us to take buildings down doesn't allow us to take a shed basically down, an overhead awning kind of a thing. So we have no power to take it down. All we can do is try to convince him to do it, and we've repeatedly tried. He keeps saying the right thing, but he just doesn't do anything. So I don't know what else we can do. We've had more than one meeting on it, believe me.
Keep after him.
We will.
And another building is the one on Worcester, the corner of Worcester and Henry Street? Big yellow building?
Yes.
That building is an ice ore, and it's getting worse by the day. At least have them pick up the trash around the building.
Worcester and Henry, okay. I think that's one on the list that's coming down.
I think it is. But in the meantime, but in the meantime, maybe we could clean it up a little bit.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Clements?
Well, I just wanted to give a shout out and say thank you for the help that we had yesterday. There was, the hospital had their wonderful dock day up at Westville, and as part of that, something that started a number of years ago to raise a little bit of money for the Cops and Kids program, Lieutenant Dinghy had agreed to help out with the loading and unloading and setting up first thing in the morning, and then staying all day, and then removing and helping, again, helping the hospital to make sure everything gets back. So what he would do is promote that to the Cops and Kids volunteers and some of the councilors and such. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. If any of you are watching out there, the youth that came and did help in the morning, at eight thirty in the morning on a Sunday morning, and it wasn't very warm, to come out and to do some really great community service. Council Manna and myself and Lieutenant Dinghy stayed all day and did, we did some, there's a raffle going on for the Cops and Kids, so we manned a tent and we let people know about the program. And it's always gratifying to have people come up and tell you what a great program that is. So I just, again, shouting out to those who got up early, came and helped, and stayed all day in the cold, and then helped to put everything away. So it was a long day, eight thirty to four, and you guys did a great job, and girls, and thank you from the community and from the hospital standpoint, and good job, again, Lieutenant Dinghy with getting the Cops and Kids motivated. It'll be, I'm sure, a great, great summer season will be upon us. Plenty of donation opportunities. If anybody wants to contribute to that program, you certainly can do so by just getting in touch with Lieutenant Dinghy at the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I actually was not going to speak tonight, but unfortunately, you have me for a few minutes. I just want to comment on a couple of things that the citizens did say. Mr. Demers got up and he did talk about the police not being, having to protect you. Well, that's kind of, the police, the justices ruled that the police do not have a constitutional duty to protect you. Although they do take the oath, they are hired to protect you. Our police will protect you in this community. And although I do support the Second Amendment, I really would hope that people would really think it through before they went all out and bought guns and kept them on their nightstands. And another thing, I just want to say, I felt that the council got attacked tonight by Mr. Abrahamson. He did say he was not acting on the school committee's behalf, he was acting on his own behalf, but the majority of what I heard came from the school committee's side of him, I believe. I just want to say thank you for holding your composure. We as public officials are more apt to, we have to take more criticism than a private citizen. And that was actually determined back in nineteen sixty-four by our Supreme Court in Sullivan versus the New York Times. So it was a very constitutional night up here tonight, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And kudos on the reference to nineteen sixty-four. The history classes are definitely helping.
Don't you say about sixty-four?
That was the last time you played softball, right? Okay. So you could see that on Saturday. She was just referencing a legal precedent, that's all. Briefly, I'll go to the manager real quick, and then let you get the last word. I know you love the last word.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Members of the council, I just wanted to comment. I've heard a couple of comments offered, and I heard the gentleman earlier tonight being critical of the investigation of the police department. I would like very much to try to investigate that for you, but I don't even know where to begin. When someone comes to the microphone and publicly uses your good offices to make a claim, which is totally unsubstantiated and is clearly disturbing, were it to be true, great damage is done because the suggestion that our police department is willingly, willfully not investigating break-ins, I would submit to the council, is just frankly ridiculous. Of course the police department investigates break-ins. Are there three hundred reported break-ins that the police have just flat refused to investigate? I would like people to think about that for a moment. It's a small community. We don't have that many homes. If three hundred of your constituents were broken into and the police department refused to investigate, you would have known about it long before tonight, because they would have started calling you. So do I doubt the veracity of that statement greatly? Two hundred break-ins, which people didn't even report, with no source cited, what do we do with that? I can't disprove or prove a negative. If somebody stood at that microphone and said the sun's not going to come up tomorrow morning, I can't investigate it and disprove it. I can't investigate and disprove an allegation of two hundred break-ins that weren't reported, and thus the innuendo is the police are ineffective. This is a fashionable time to say negative things about police departments. We all know it, we see it in the news every day. The plain fact of the matter is, in my time with you, coming up on a year now, believe it or not, in a very few weeks, I have found your police department to be extraordinarily talented, incredibly dedicated, phenomenally professional. Are they perfect? Of course not. No more than any department, board, committee, commission, individuals, or employees are perfect. But do they do an extraordinary job in a community which has some very substantial issues? Yes, they do an extraordinary job. I deal with the occasional complaint, I got one this weekend, and I immediately started the investigation on Sunday afternoon. So are there cause to be concerned? Yes. But when a citizen comes to us with a credible, specific allegation of police misconduct, it is seriously investigated, and it is dealt with, and it is recorded in the town's records what we did with it. And I want you as councilors to know that, because you don't always see those. Some of you are the ones who bring those things to me, and you see the result. But I don't have any effective way to share all that with everybody, because sometimes it involves people who don't give permission for me to share that. But I want the council to know that when we have specific allegations of police misconduct, we investigate them rigorously. And on occasion, we have to do something by a way of discipline, but in the vast majority of cases, it turns out to be people who were being arrested, who were complaining about the fact that they were being arrested. Well, they were being arrested because they were doing something wrong, and they didn't like it. And that's the vast majority of the complaints that I've investigated. But that, tonight, disturbs me to a very great extent, because it reflects badly on this community, it reflects badly on the men and women that protect us every day, and I just think it's grotesquely unfair for an allegation like that to be made, because I can't prove or disprove it. I can't do anything about it. And that's why at one point during that, I whispered to the chairman, this needs to be discontinued, because it's grossly unfair to allow that kind of an allegation to be made against the men and women we employ without some way for us to be able to decide if it's true or not. I'm sorry, but I thought that needed to be said, because tomorrow morning, those policemen and policewomen are going to be talking about this. And I didn't want it to end tonight without something positive being said, and I know I'm not saying anything that any one of you councilors would have said. I know that. But I think it just needed to be said tonight, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crossco?
Yes, I got a few things that I have to just say. First, this weekend is the Southbridge Little League opening day parade. It will kick off at nine AM, leaving the registry of motor vehicles right there on, off of Central Street. So if you, it usually travels down Worcester Street right into, usually, a left onto Henry Street. So if you can, if you're in the area, if you want to just pull over and give some of these kids, again, our kids, Southbridge kids, the support and wish them well during this baseball season, as many teams gear up and they're excited about trying to reach the postseason. So it's this Saturday, opening day, Little League parade. Also, Saturday night, we have the alumni and town versus school softball game. I'm sorry, I said it that way, I didn't arrange it, he did. But I, we will bring a dance to the show. But again, Apple was practicing on Sunday, he's ready to go for the game. Councilor Estrada was practicing for the game, so we're ready to go, so we're excited about that. If you're interested in playing town, school, please see myself or our council chair, Morierati, to make sure you're in the game. We don't want nobody to be left out. It will be recorded, so if you thought tonight was entertaining, wait a couple of weeks, and that game will be very entertaining. The third point that I have, and it's just, I, it's a concern, I got two concerns. I've always said it, it's summertime coming up. If we can continue to monitor pedestrians on Main Street, especially by the library, unfortunately, it continues to happen, and I vowed to a family that every year, every time I have a chance, I will say it. They lost a loved one for somebody's negligence, for not paying attention. So I vowed to that family, as long as I hold office, that I will continue to advocate for insured safety, more patrols, however we do it. And then the last thing, I don't know, this probably is going to have to go through our ED, our recreation director. Our parks, unfortunately, have gotten several calls in regards to basketball. Some are for, some are against. But if you look at our basketball courts in our community, Henry Street has one hoop, at one time it had six hoops. Moore Street had two hoops, now they're both broken. Every day, there's kids out there playing. I'd rather have a kid playing than sitting home, playing PlayStation, Xbox, whatever, or on the streets. If they're in a park playing with friends, I think it's great. The hoops are horrible down at Moore Street, they're broken.
Get them fixed.
So, so I just, it's just a concern. The kids want to be out, I want to be out there with them too. So if we can, just whoever it may, if we have to buy new hoops, rims, whatever, if we can make that investment, I think it would be great.
I think in our fifty-six million dollar budget, we can find a few basketball hoops, no problem.
Thank you. That's all I got for tonight.
Moving on to agenda number sixteen, discussion on next meeting date?
Next week, Monday, May fourth, at seven PM, here in council chambers.
And adjournments?
Simple handful, all in favor. We are adjourned, thank you, folks.